It's a little past the hour of seven. If we'd all please rise and join us in pledging allegiance to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no bounds. It's not quite a citizen's concern, but we have a distinguished guest, Father Rogers of the St. John's Episcopal Church. And welcome to Holbrook.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. I just wanted to introduce myself first of all. I've been pastor at St. John's for about two years now, but it was temporary and we're going into permanent. And so I'm gonna be...
Congratulations.
Thank you. And I'm gonna be someone in town that we have a lot, a big passion at St. John's about the town and know that you've seen a lot of good things that have happened out of St. John's, the food pantry and whatnot. And one of the initiatives that we're working on now, and more information will be coming soon, is that we're starting an after-school program for seventh and eighth graders that will work on homework skills, daily life skills, teach them how to cook simple suppers if they're from a family that maybe their only main meal would be here at school. And we already have a bunch of volunteers that are chomping at the bit to get involved with this. And we're working in conjunction with all the other parishes in town, as well as we've reached out to the police department and other local businesses and whatnot to help out with this program. Like, we're gonna try to get a Zumba teacher that came in once a month to teach a Zumba class, a Taekwondo teacher, things like that. So it's a gift we want to give back to the community. We have an empty parish hall every afternoon, and there's kids hanging around in town that may take advantage of this, and we'll be able to help build up, you know, good self-esteem skills in some of these kids. So I've been in conversation with Mary with that wonderful program that she does with the drama in the summertime. And we're just really excited about being able to offer this as a gift from our church to the community. It's not a religious-based program, so don't worry about that. There will be one half an hour a week. If kids want to go in to do a little prayer time, that's fine, but it's totally optional and is voluntary. And I just wanted to say hello, and we're really excited about this new project at St. John's.
Thank you very much, Father Rogers. Welcome.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Are there any citizens' concerns? Seeing none, we will now turn to the next item on the agenda, and there appears to be a civics club presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have been anxious to get here to tell you all the things that have been happening in civics club since the last time we were here. So this is a representation of our civics club. There were sixteen members that we've been to the State House five times this year, and we have some really exciting news to share with you. And this is the portfolio that we presented at the State House. You guys can stand with your...
Who do we have here?
Well, there's your camera. Yeah, why don't you put it up there so that the kid...
You guys can introduce yourselves.
Actually, why don't you just turn around right here? Do it right here. Put it right up here, and the kids go right behind you. Right behind you. Just move that shit. Go right behind here. Go right behind here. Great, excellent. Even better. Great.
Set the max of the school committee in the presenting room.
That's all right.
Just start with Melanie and just say your name.
My name is Gilli.
I'm Rose Paul.
I'm Mary Goldie.
I'm Emily McLeod.
I'm Kayla Costas.
Okay, now, you've said all that for the camera. They've had a nice picture of it. We're now gonna do this a little more conventionally. If you'll just turn it around so we may see it and see yourselves on the poster. Is that all right? You've had your visual presentation for the camera. Okay.
Since we came last time, we've had some great unbelievable accomplishments. We have gone through the Board of Selectmen, and they have actually issued a proclamation signed by all the selectmen that designate September 21st as Peace Day in Holbrook in conjunction with the United Nations Day of Peace. That is an initiative that was started by a person named Jeremy Gilli, who is in England. And thanks to H-CAM, the whole sixth grade actually had the opportunity to Skype with Jeremy Gilli this year and tell him our plans for Peace Day. Since then, Senator Keenan has kind of taken up our rallying cry and introduced a bill into the United States, to the Massachusetts Legislature, and to establish Peace Day in the state of Massachusetts. And that bill, the kids have gone twice to testify to Senate subcommittees on why they think that bill is important. And on June 29th, thirty of us went to the State House and got to sit in the Senate chamber and watch them unanimously ratify our bill and move it along to the House. So right now, our bill is in the House of Representatives. It's gone for its third reading. I talked to Senator Keenan last week, and he thinks that there will be a signing with Governor Baker coming up, like momentarily, as quickly as the House can move it along. So that's really exciting for these guys to know that they have been a part of getting legislation done in the state of Massachusetts. Additionally to that, we have been working on getting our peace poll and trying to figure out. We got the approval from the Permanent School Building Committee. Thanks to Mrs. Vash, who is the mother of Raphael. Mrs. Vash works at Exel High School at South Boston High, and we have the unique and incredibly exciting opportunity to collaborate with them. And they are going to build our peace poll for us, and we are gonna collaborate with them on a student-to-student basis. And if you wanted to just say a few words about what Exel High School is?
Sure. So I'm going into my tent here there. It's Exel High School, but it's been South Boston High School from 1901 up until recently when it got rebranded. But it is in the Boston Public Schools. We have a very unique art, not quite a makerspace, run by an artist in residence. It's called Room 13. And she graduated from Harvard School of Ed. She does set design, and she has a theater background, so we have welding stations and woodworking. And she's done very large structures, and students can weld, and it's a student-run organization. The board of directors are students. And they are ready and willing, once we get out the grants written, to make whatever peace poll these students...
Could you describe briefly what materials the peace poll will be made of? You say it was approved by the Permanent School Building Committee.
The Permanent School Building Committee, we actually had two students that went and talked to them back in April. Everything we do is over a vacation, so... But we always have students that come, April vacation. And we discussed what our plan for the peace poll was, and they said that they would like it to be made out of some type of metal because it would be longer lasting. So with that in mind, we had gotten an estimate from a company in Arizona that is the leading company for schools and public buildings to make these peace polls, which is a symbol of peace and unity. And you can put whatever message that you want on it. It's usually four-sided, and we have a design that we would like Bulldogs build bridges, no more hurting people, peace for the Martin Richard Foundation, make peace prevail on earth, which is the unanimous way that people put on peace signs, and cool, you make peace with, which is the Peace One Day logo. But it's all fluid. And then came this Vash and said that South Boston High School, Room 13 at Exel High, would love to get involved in this, and that it seems like it's gonna work out. So we have some innovative ways that we're thinking that maybe we could get some of the materials or have some of the materials donated. You know, the sky's the limit. There's a huge technology component to that where you could make them and have lighting in it so that when social media or people text Bulldogs build bridges, there would be a light that would go up powered by solar energy. There's many, the sky's the limit. We could, you know, it's up to these brains and the brains at that classroom what we can do. But it's going to be a symbol. And as we talked at the Permanent School Building Committee, the kids had debated about where they wanted the peace poll to be, on the recessed area. And we came to the conclusion that the best spot for it to be would be on the athletic fields because all of them have had experiences, whether it be on Little League teams or whatever, where coaches, parents, you know, other athletes are really not exhibiting the best behavior that students should model when they're trying to work as a team. So it was these guys that came up with the idea, it should be on the athletic field, and the value of good sportsmanship should, when anybody comes into Holbrook High School or Holbrook pre-K through 12, know that this is what Bulldogs are promoting, that we are Bulldogs and that we are valuing good sportsmanship and acceptance for whatever level...
Is there, what care is being taken to avoid sort of the osmendius effect, that this will be, you know, rusted or corroded, or, you know, it will be yesterday's project? And, I mean, are there certain materials that will be used to make sure, A, that it's safe, and B, that it will last in a New England weather?
That's why Consigly recommended stainless steel, which is, of course, the most expensive metal that you could get. But we're fundraising, and we already have some funds that have been contributed. We are going to do a big publicity blitz about the fundraising campaign when school starts. The kids have some unique ideas that are exceptional, that they just want thirty seconds to tell you about. Consigly has said that they will work with us to, you know, make sure that it's grounded in the ground properly. The community as a whole is 100% behind us. The selectmen are really, you know, excited about this project, and it will be something that Holbrook can be proud of, and it will... Our goal is to have it dedicated on September 21st, 2017. That way, it will take the whole school year probably to design and make it, and then we're thinking of a big ceremony to transport it from South Boston to Holbrook and to dedicate it. Mr. and Mrs. Richard have said that they are, and the Martin Richard Foundation are want to be there when this poll is dedicated because it started with, you know, the project that we did for the Martin Richard Foundation, so...
School committee member Davis, you had a question?
Two things. The fields won't be ready till 2018, first of all. So you probably wanna factor that in, especially if it's going on the football track area as opposed to the baseball, softball area. But the other thing is, has anybody spoken to Grant Steel in town?
Like I said, this, we have a lot of...
A brainstorm.
A lot of...
It's, you know, I don't know anything about them. I know they're a local business, and they've been around for a while, and it's just a thought.
We actually have...
Is there a business plan? Has anyone actually reduced this to some logical writing as to specifications and costs, or is this just sort of off the cuff?
The artist in residence as well, versed in steel, and she's part of stationery union. She's done good parts in England with the rain and humidness with the arid weather, so she's, she's already made some recommendations on what materials we're not to use, avoiding sharp areas and maybe etching instead of cutouts, so she's...
I should think that would help with the fundraising. I mean, if the more specific it is, the more you can bank and appeal.
But not to forget that this is a student-run initiative, so the students at Exel High School and the students, you know, in civics club that are entering seventh grade that will be moving on up, and hopefully drawing some older upperclassmen to help them with this. This is their project, so...
I have no problem with the conception, but, you know, it's not to be expected that they're engineers at this stage, yeah.
So you, did you mention that you said they had some ideas about fundraising that they were gonna talk about?
Yes.
I just wanna say I'm really impressed. I mean, you know, kudos to your hard work and your dedication to the project. This is such a meaningful project, so...
We have a thousand dollars, half of it which is already in the bank and half of it which is being written through a donation from a parent who works for a large health insurance company that should be coming in momentarily. And then they have, they came up with this idea, which works really well with the vision of where school is going and the STEM projects that we have often. So Costas and Raf would like to tell you a little bit about what their thought is.
So we were thinking of making a Rubik's Cube competition, mostly because there's kids in our grade who are really interested in it, and it's a trend and everything, you know. We would like to, we would like to fund, like, make a fundraiser, or the competition.
A competition?
If people want to enter the tournament.
Okay, now tell them how, everything that you were telling me the other day about the algorithms.
Oh, yeah. So there's algorithms included in solving the Rubik's Cube, and then we were thinking about, like, making like a t-shirt or something out of the algorithms that say "E" on it, and...
Interesting.
Yeah. So the, out of the many ideas that people have been throwing around to us, this is what these guys are passionate about, and they think that they would get a lot of interest in maybe the younger grades. The Rubik's Cube thing, unbeknownst to me, there's, you don't even have to look at it, you just have to follow the algorithm to solve it. So they were thinking they might wanna teach that to the younger kids, and it's, as Raf said, it's a good muscle builder for your brain.
Absolutely. So the cultural council as well, which I'm a member of, we're, we're working on writing a grant, and maybe since it wouldn't be erected for another year or two, we could have a couple installments, maybe the initial structure, and then if we wanted to add technology, we could write another grant a year from now and see what happens.
Well, we look forward to hearing from your progress. Maybe we can get a quarterly report. Is that fair?
But I'm not done yet.
Well, you're going to be done because we're giving you one more minute, so go right ahead.
Okay. Well, this September 21st is our initial Peace Day. As I said, the selectmen signed it into law, so they're expecting us to celebrate this. So our first thing that we're gonna do is create a mission statement with Exel High School for the building of the peace poll. We are also going to work with the younger schools and get them involved. We've talked to the cultural council. One of the big things that we really feel is that you have to have peace within yourself before you can have peace with other people. So we're thinking of maybe a Tai Chi event or some type of meditation event for the younger kids to kind of have our initial kickoff of Peace Day. And that, we're still in the works, but we only have a month until, it's September 21st, so we need to really hit the ground running on that, as well as making bulletin boards in all three schools to let everybody be aware that this is a significant thing. And their goal is to start in September, virtually working on the design of the poll so that by December, we can start the construction of it. And this would be collaboration. There might be some back and forth. I mentioned this to Dr. DeMello, and she was really excited about the idea of the kids traveling to South Boston High School, maybe them coming to see us and having a diverse group of people working on it. So that's, in a nutshell, we have a lot of things going on. This started as a, as a small project, and it's kind of snowballed into something that not only is affecting the school, but the town and possibly the state, hopefully in the next couple of weeks.
Well, you're to be commended for your efforts. It's a very civic-minded project and very appropriate for a civics club. You have a very nice mentor to help guide you on this and in cooperation with the school itself. And as I say, we look forward to hearing more about it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can you ask one more follow-up?
Yes, absolutely. One more follow-up question.
So this is probably dependent upon the design, but do you have any idea of the projected cost of this project?
The estimate that we got coming in in Arizona was $5,500 for the stainless steel signs, working with South Boston High School. And like I said, we have a lot of violence in the firebug, materials, donations, and things like that. We think that we can get it significantly less than that. But also, like I said, the sky's the limit. The more technology or the more innovative, you want it to last into the 21st century. So the more technology that we could address and put in it, the better, so...
Just, I have one request.
Yes.
Once you have your design finalized, could you share that with us and with the School Building Committee, just so we'll know what, you know, the final product will look like?
Yeah, they're pretty basic. Like I said, they're four-sided, and the sayings on them will be cut out, but with Bulldogs the other nights, we're trying to think of maybe a Bulldog riding a Jousting Horse or something that could collaborate when we put the schools together.
Yes. Member Davis, you had a...
Just, I don't know whether it's your school, but that's the next Permanent School Building Committee is on the 21st, so I don't know if that's a good way to kick it off or just the fall.
Secretary Alterio, you had a...
And you mentioned that, you know, you were thinking of, you know, having it placed on the field, you know, as David Davis indicated, you know, some of the fields won't be done for, you know, until 2018. So did you have an idea of where on the field, what field you wanted it on?
When we went to talk to Consigly when we were at the Permanent School Building meeting, they had some ideas. They actually were really excited about it and said, once we get to that phase of, you know, placement and things like that, they had suggested maybe possibly selling bricks and people could, you know, engrave the bricks around it, and that might be a good thing for classes to get involved in or things like that, so that everybody, you know, alumni whatever, could maybe have a part in that. So they had said maybe a walkway with a little surrounding and possibly a garden in the middle, so...
So there may be a place in the field that it's better suited for than somewhere else?
Right. I don't think it will be right on the field. It might be like coming into the field.
Right, right. Yes, yes.
It's like a beacon. It's a goalpost.
All right. Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, guys. Good work. All right. Next on the Batters Box, we have the superintendent report, Dr. Lally. I see a subheading entitled "Professional Development Update." Please proceed.
Oh, great. That's going to be Assistant Superintendent Julie Hamilton, who's going to be talking about some really important and innovative programs that we've, she's actually had biggest hand in creating this summer.
Team effort all the way to the front. So, welcome, everybody. Good evening. It's been quite a big year PD for the Holbrook Public School District. One of the things that you've probably heard or mentioned here and there is there's some new requirements from the Department of Ed for teacher relicensure coming up after where we are in the summer, specifically July 216. One of the requirements for professional development is that we offer our teachers a chance to get 15 PDPs in special ed and 15 PDPs in English second language learning towards their relicensure when it should come. So we've done a myriad of things that I can't wait to share with you. We have, for example, I'm gonna break it up. We started this year, and this year we began our year with mentoring program. All new teachers received mentoring with the modules from the Department of Ed because as kids come in and new teachers come in, we need to make sure they're caught up to where our staff is at. The new teacher evaluation tool came in several years ago now, a couple of years back. We wanna catch everybody up to speed to understand the requirements in this district, how they will be evaluated by even as great a staff. We want everybody to understand what a rubric looks like, what the modifiers are that's gonna separate out needs improvement from proficiency and so forth. And we provide a year of support with not only a highly qualified mentor at the appropriate level matched up by content, we also offer services through the Office of Curriculum. So anyone who chooses to make appointments with us, we can look at their artifacts that they're collecting. We'll do peer coaching type of things in the classroom. Sometimes Steph, Kathy go right into the classroom. We also, when it comes to evaluation time, we'll look at their portfolios. We really just give them non-junctive feedback, where there is a support team. We wanna see everyone be successful, and our goal is to put a lot of professional development and a lot of support into our teachers and retain great teachers. So that's how we started. All our mentors had to be qualified, new Department of Ed regs came in. We had to make sure that they all attended a workshop. So anyone who wanted to mentor in our district had to take a Teachers 21 course. It's one of the Department of Education's vendors that they've supported. So this year, we had those trainings. On top of that, we worked on model units, we worked on curriculum. Curriculum writing is never done, and I think there's a lot of misconception about that because we're looking at common core and shifts that happen, and we're looking at mandates. And we're looking at a big emphasis, and we talked about this a little, on social thinking, and we're looking at access for all students, whether it's title students, students with disabilities. So the state is always asking us to really look at curriculum, look at not just what we're teaching, but how we're teaching it and how we're assessing it. We talked a little bit about DDMs here, you know, I think last year more so. And our district's pretty much ahead of the curve with the DDM initiative. We had been called up as a model, and we continue to develop assessments. And we're not putting the cart before the horse, and we're taking our time with it because we want quality assessments that are gonna give us the kind of data that we're looking for. We're looking to triangulate our data, so it's not just one source. We're not dependent on an MCAS test, which then becomes a PARC test, which then becomes a .2U, 2.0 test. So spend some time with our teachers on developing the model units at the elementary levels. Steph here and I know and Kathy worked with the teachers, really implementing the state's recommended model modules and tweaking them and making sure that we're pooling in as best we can the resources that go along with them. Because when we adopt a unit, and teachers love it, but it comes with test books, and it comes with the novels, and it comes with all the different manipulatives. So we have to do some careful budgeting around how we're gonna, you know, reach those goals of getting all those products together. Grade five and six, let's see, actually, that was part of the model units. The autism modules was a new initiative. Special education underwent this year. We talk a lot about social-emotional learning. We talk a lot about the rise of students on the autism spectrum and autistic behavior. And there's a myriad and a big spectrum of kids who fall between. So getting student teachers to really meet the needs of students in the classroom, understand what kids are bringing in with them, understand how to address different learning needs and different styles, is something that we do all the time. But we really focused on the autism modules with our paraprofessionals, education teachers, sub-separate teachers. We were able to provide grief counseling for our nurses and helped to develop some protocols this year. One of the undertakings, Dr. Lally's goal was, we looked at our crisis manual. So we wanted to make sure that we were really current on what the state is saying and what we know about research and how to deal with kids who are grieving and families who are grieving, and making sure our essential staff is on the same page and whatnot there. We had a series of webinar trainings that went on for our OT and speech, because remember, when we think about PD, we have to provide PD for guidance counselors and nurses and specialist teachers and content teachers and everything in between. So we wanted to make sure we had a variety. We had a close reading workshop. We had immediate and academic resource trainings at the high school. And part of that was Chris Golden realizing that there's a lot of information and databases and resources that live right here in our district, and with the worldwide web and the internet, you can, you can find almost anything. But people weren't aware of where to access Good Lesson Command, or where to, you know, to, if they wanna look for particular standards, where to go and kind of look at materials that would align to that. So she did a really nice workshop for the staff there. We also had OG. And one of the things we're proud about, Cheryl and Steph were bringing and bringing this initiative, is intervention, right? Reading and intervention. And we know if our kids aren't reading on grade level by third or fourth grade, it's really hard, and they're always playing catch-up. So we did a lot of research around the best intervention programs and came up with Gordon Gillingham. And at this point, really proud to say, all of our teachers up to the fourth grade, right, have had it, teachers, fed teachers, everyone. And so now, in the fall, Steph has set up a training for our newest teachers, the new hires this year. So that's really important that we keep that sustained, and every year, make sure we budget to have that initiative moving forward. Teach Point training happened this year with Woody Conrad. We did some professional development at the high school and the others, right before professional development days, would take 10 to 15 minutes to try to just explain that we have a program called Teach Point. Teachers have been saying for years, I have artifacts, I have evaluations, I have SMART goals, I have all these things. They're on my desktop, they're in hard copy, they're in binders. I really wish there was one place I could store these things, one database where I could go in, and if it's five years from now and I wanna see my progress and look back at what I've turned in five years prior, it's all gonna be there. So everyone received, it's an application that they have on their desktops. And what's neat about that is if I go in and do a walkthrough JFK, I'm going to do it electronically, and within 24 hours, that person's gonna open just like an email. They're gonna have all my feedback. They can communicate with me, they can ask for an appointment. There's all kinds of ways for them to set up a meeting time to talk to me or a post-conference type of situation. I can share information with the principal of that building, even, you know, 'cause it's hard sometimes to find if you're gonna do seven walkthroughs in three different buildings. But that, that electronic database is really helpful for us. And teachers have wanted it, so they were pretty overjoyed when it came in. We had the MasQ Conference, it's one of the biggest conferences, maybe you've heard of it, technology. We were able to send teachers to that this year. We sent teachers to the Curriculum Summit, and we were showcased there, which is always something to be very proud of. Our science department at the high school, this is their second time being featured. Kelly Rose McCarthy in the math department was also featured. So other districts came into a room, where Holbrook was showcased, big signs everywhere, and they were showing teachers how we've created curriculum, how we've adapted curriculum maps, how we've infused standards to really do cross-curricular projects and hands-on learning for students. So that was really quite an accolade for those teachers. The youth mental health first aid workshop was a big initiative, and Cheryl was behind that initiative this year, making sure the teachers were trained. Again, thinking of social thinking, you're thinking about well-being. When we think of our students, we're thinking about multifaceted pieces. We want our kids to be emotionally well, we want them physically well, and of course academically sound, so we've really gotta think about that. The AP Institute, we've sent teachers, and most recently this summer, sent a teacher to the AP Institute. That is one thing that the state recommends. Any teacher who's teaching an AP course should attend. Any teacher who's teaching an AP course should attend. We had the MRA, which is the Mass Reading Association. We were able to get co-teaching workshops through the mass reading. And remember, when we talk about these things, we're using Title II A. We did not have a line item for professional development, so we're using title money and we're using different connections that we've made with other districts. Or when we were Level 3, we made some connections with DSEC and Mass Focus. So trying to keep up those relationships and networking to provide for these workshops. So we also had Empowering Writers this year, and that's a big focus down at JFK. Mass Focus Academy had selected us. Actually, we've got a call. They wanted a team from Holbrook to come in and work with STEAM. So we had a team that was across grade levels there. We had DOVE Training, which was the interventions dealing with students and victims of domestic violence. That was our guidance department. Because really have to start thinking about, again, kids are bringing a lot with them these days, right? And we have to make sure that before learning can take place, all those mental health pieces are secure. The Mass Reading Association Conference, we were able to send staff and administration to that. Challenging Classroom Behavior, Deboof came in this year because that's a big issue. And sometimes it is behavior and sometimes it's classroom management and dealing with, not everything's going to be the same and not every student's gonna react the way we want. And so giving our teachers a toolkit. We talked about that at our leadership retreat, right? Because you have to provide training in order for people to do the things you want them to do. So without the training, it's really hard to have expectation. So we also had PARC training when we had the switch over to the PARC test, which we had, I would say, all positive feedback from teachers that they were really happy to see us go with this critical thinking piece and with this new wave, new gen type of test because no one felt stressed. We kept hearing, you can get one complaint, which you don't even understand. It's a really big deal. No one usually knocks on your office and says, yeah, I wanna give you a compliment in the curriculum office, but they were really, really happy with the way we rolled out the PARC. So we brought everybody over in teams and we had multiple trainings and we showed them what to expect and we let them take some sampling of the test. And we showed them the websites and the resources they could get you to help take the curriculum they already had and the lessons plans they already had and the modules they've already developed and how to infuse those critical thinking pieces and getting kids to communicate, maybe, you know, infusing some projects in there so kids are collaborating. Because we really need to work at making sure that our kids are working together and able to highlight each other's talents. One of the other things that we did was, we kind of thought, we had to think entrepreneurially in a way because we were running out of some money and wanted to provide some like a PD come spring. So when spring came, I said, what do you think we should do? We talked about, we said, we've got some really talented folks. We have reading certified people. We have amazing adjustment nurses. Everyone's certified, highly qualified. So we put out a challenge to the staff and we sent it to everybody and we said, we have enough money to pay you a flat rate to prepare, and PDPs, right? To prepare a workshop for your passion, something that's gonna enhance instruction, enhance learning in the district. We're gonna pay you to pay the materials and to implement these two-hour workshops. And people liked it and we couldn't believe it. So we ended up having all kinds of input. It was springtime. We had MCAS, the PARC testing, another. So much going on yet we still had adaptations to the daily five. And these are teachers across the district from JFK to the high school. We had media resources and databases for research. We had project-based science. We had incorporating tech in the classroom with Das Azam. We have creative products to improve engagement with Mary Bingles. We had Nicole Capone and Chris Golden, just to name a few of these teachers, and they were highly attended. And people said, this was really great. Can we continue it this summer? So, this summer, we really stretched our financial resources and we said, well, we're gonna do both. We're gonna have folks from in-house. And I just attended Mr. Flanagan's ESL workshop, which was amazing. And I said to myself, it was better than the one, and Steph, you were there, it was better than the one that Dr. Lally and I went to. That was run by the state. It was so wonderful. And teachers said, okay, can we do that again in the fall? So we put together a menu and we called it Summer Session because we thought, this is kind of neat. This is what colleges do and this is, you know, so we're gonna do this. So we put together Summer Session. And we had some vendors from outside. Everybody was someone that was recommended by the Department of Ed or through our collaborations with DCAC and Department of Ed affiliated folks. So we had Bill Atwood, who was the number one guy in John Collins Writing, and he came in and he did building and reinforcing critical math content for New Massachusetts Math Standards and Assessments. We had failing new standards, especially in science, and we tend to look a lot at ELA and languages, not so much at science and math. So we brought in Bill Atwood. And we had people from the high school. We had people from JFK. And the only thing we asked our vendors was, when you come in, would you take an attendance sheet prior to the workshop so you know your audience? So you're not gonna gear it all to, you know, the high school or the lower elementary. You're gonna meet everybody's needs and make sure that everybody has a positive experience. Deboof, amazing. I could have spent years in her workshop. She is such a talented woman. We got her out of the Holbrook Collaborative. She came in and did effective classroom management. How do I get here from there? And that's something teachers struggle with. And not everybody likes to admit it, but it's hard when you're teaching ESL students, Title I students, inclusion students and emotionally, you know, tax students and everybody's in front of you and there's 26 kids and you're either a novice teacher or not. And you need a bag of tricks. So she came in and she's just so hands-on, was positive. Joanne Silverman, we had her signed up with the social emotional wellness in the classroom. And again, trying to work at social thinking because we need our kids to also accept difference. And we need our kids to be aware. And we need teachers to be sympathetic to difference and so forth. We offered two courses from Bridgewater State because some people like to go off campus. So we have two Bridgewater State courses running, promoting social emotional development in early childhood and understanding and teaching students in poverty. That is an issue for us. We're over 40% free and reduced fund. Our Title I numbers are growing. Let me help our grant, we hope. But it is an issue for us and what the kids are bringing in, what they don't have, we need to start thinking about that, especially going to another school when we talk about technology and resources. So those are two courses that we offer there. And remember, when you're reading through these, they're all qualifying people for the 15 PDPs in special ed or ESL. So Andrew Flanagan did his teaching English Language Learners just this past week. Jorge Gonzalez, our new tech director, did Google platforms and Google apps in the classroom and that was very highly attended as well. And then we said, well, what about the people who don't feel like leaving the house? Because sometimes you don't want to leave the house. ASCD is one of the leaders in professional development. And so we decided that we would offer a webinar series. And if people took the webinar series, then we would buy them the book that went with that so that they could have that. And we would offer PDPs through that system. So we had, we ended up over, we had 35 teachers this month come in and get PDPs and professional development towards areas of interest or areas for licensure. And that was quite a big deal for us. In the fall, we've already started partnering and networking with people from not just Bridgewater State, but Stonehill College. We're trying to spread out. We met a woman this morning from the Department of Ed who's willing to come into some trainings. And of course, the price tag is free, so that's wonderful because they're not all free. And then you have to kind of pick and choose what teachers really want, what we can afford, and build that big professional development plan. So this year, walking into this year, we will continue to offer everything that was offered this summer again because it was a request from many teachers because you do, you know, I could only go to one. I have babysitting or this issue. So we'll be offering the same courses. We'll be offering teachers a chance to showcase their talents. And on top of that, we have a huge amount of free services to Mass Focus Academy coming in, free cost, full credit, 67.5 PDPs for teachers, lots of ways to earn professional development. Now, when we think about the calendar year and we say, well, we still have to write curriculum because again, everything hinges around what we're teaching and how we're teaching and how we're assessing. And it's not always going to be a formal assessment or a high-stakes test, but if we don't know that what we're doing is effective in the classroom, then we need to switch it up. So we're really working at curriculum projects, but we've kind of blown it up and said, we're not gonna just punch the clock and get it done. We're gonna take our time with it. We're gonna spread it out. We talked to the state and we said, what if we have a trajectory? What if we have a plan? Because we have MEAS coming as well. And I said, that's great. If you're doing quality work and you have a trajectory that gets you there, whether it's spring of 218 or, you know, the fall of 217, we're just happy to see quality work that's moving forward. So we want quality assessments. We want quality work. We want our teachers to not just, you know, write a lesson plan that they've seen online, but we want them looking for lots of sources that are engaging for students. So we're kind of taking a different approach of, what are you passionate about in your teaching? How can you engage your students? And I'd rather have lesson plans that are really exciting and units that are really exciting, that are standards-based, that are infused technology. So we've kind of slowed it down a bit. But when we looked at our calendar and we get rid of the full day in November, which is about transition to our new building, and the conference days that come in the spring, we're talking about four half-days. It's not a whole lot of time and it might seem daunting, like, they haven't been spending the year writing curriculum. We're not. It's really four half-days that we do curriculum writing activities. But we're also infusing other types of PD because we're able to slow it down and the state is behind that project. And we're also able to offer after-school workshops. Jorge's gonna be doing monthly tech workshops. It's gonna be amazing for teachers. We wanted that for years. So we're gonna find creative ways and continue to find creative ways to offer more exciting, engaging PD that our teachers want, but also what they need. And that's kind of the A to Z of professional development at this time. And I also have a sad announcement that the state is no longer funding 632, which was our Bulldog Academy grant. The good news is, we will continue to have Bulldog Academy because we have seen a little bump in our Title II A. So it will, the show will go on. We're just gonna have to figure out, you know, where we can get some free PD that we would have paid for and so forth and move things around. But we have seen the results, preliminary results and data from Bulldog Academy. We know it's making a difference. We know it's helping our students if anything. This was the year we hoped to expand it, out of the high school down to the middle school, which will become a six to eight. So we're still working on that. We've got some grants that we never went after before that we're trying for this year, competitive grants. And our fingers crossed on that, but I will let you know.
That is a wonderful, wonderful way to end a conversation. You can't just get away that way easily, okay? First of all, very well-presented and very timely topics. I don't know if you know Judith McLaughlin at the Harvard School of Ed. You might want to call her.
I'll take any context you have.
All right. I would think that they might be able to help a little bit. But I think this is great. I think it's consistent with everything we've always talked about, about moving forward here, both from the school committee level and administrative and faculty level. And it's very exciting to see this interaction. And I don't know if anyone else would like to comment on it?
Well, I just, I think it's great that you're doing that level of PD. Professional development is so important and I think it's great and you've been pretty creative about trying and getting it. So on these, you're, these are after-school typically, that's what they'll be.
Yes, so the teacher-led obviously would be after-school.
Yeah.
But this year, we are planning on workshops where we just have to provide subs. And we do have some of the coverage of that in grants. Some of the things that teachers want, we're just gonna have to pull them out. Like the lady today from the Department of Ed, she said, I'll come to Holbrook Bank again. We'll pull teachers in. Some of those things have to take place during the day and the principals behind it. So the good thing is when you have buying, people want it, it works out.
So it's a mixture of after-school.
It's a complete hybrid. It's during the day, it's after-school, it's online.
Yeah.
And if people were interested in the weekends, we would open the central office.
Yeah.
So we're trying to expand this to make it really 21st century. How are people doing PD? It's really the way your menu looks.
Very impressive.
Yes, any member, David.
I just want to comment. I love the fact that we're doing more with tapping into the talent that we already have in-house and to take advantage of that. I mean, that's one of the things they say to, you know, learning from your peers.
You know, it's interesting because when we first started, it was the typical players that really could be, you know, working for the state right now. And then you saw people go, hmm, the president wanted to run a workshop, I don't know. And you're getting people out of their shell because you're seeing it and they're saying, well, maybe I'll try it. Try it. And maybe you only run one, but maybe you're gonna run more. And every time you run it, it gets better. So it's bringing people out of their shells and starting conversations. We've had a few surprise folks and they've been dynamic. So I've really been pleased with that. And I think, if anything, the research that we did that promoted that initiative was really empowering teachers.
So multiple benefits.
Well, I'll say this.
And confidence boosters.
Absolutely.
Let me just add this. Teachers have always worked over and above their time in the classroom. But I think unless you have children in the schools today, you don't really have a sense of how much teaching has changed, you know? And the models are different for the better, you know? You know, there were so many, I can recall, fifth-grade graduates expelled after the fifth grade when I was young. And then because they were reading a Zane Gray history book, you know, I mean, Western book, instead of the history lesson and weren't considered academic. I mean, we've come so far from that rigid model to trying to embrace every possible way of getting to every single student. And the beauty in the public schools, I say it, what the great value in a public school education is, is you track each and every student. They're not just part of a herd. They're not, you know, fitting into a certain model. They're really looked at individually and they get that individual care and attention. And that's a big bang for the buck, you know, for the taxpayer if they realize, you know, what exactly is going on here.
We have early warning indicators systems. We, they call it, which can start to track where the student's going off their trajectory by kindergarten, based on attendance and other variables. So the state's really, really zeroing down on how to make tailored education to every student and their needs and their strengths and their needs for support.
Actually, I did make a note and I wanted to ask you this. You said our DDMs were held up as a model. How, why were they held up as a model?
So we were asked if they could use our plan. They did a lot of trainings around the state and we actually attended one in Brinton. And when we submitted, we didn't realize, most people submitted the minimum, so we said, we're gonna put everything on there. That we use formal assessments and summative assessments and portfolio assessments. This is gonna be great. And they had to roll it out down to here. So it was really daunting for some of the districts. It's really, but we had all of these DDMs and we said, but now we've built a bank. So if our teachers are evaluated one year on, say, Star Renaissance Learning and a formal assessment and maybe a writing portfolio, the next year they have three different assessments to choose from. Or if the administrator sees a weakness in another area, they can just zip in another DDM. So we have built a bank. So they felt that that was above and beyond. There were some snickers from the Department of Ed. So really, we embraced this quite a bit. But we were just really proud of it and it was fun to showcase that to other districts and put Holbrook on the map a little bit.
Great. Thank you. All right. Please continue, Dr. Lally. And next we have the building update. What do you have to say to us on that?
Well, we took a tour last night of the new facility and it was very exciting. We got to see the, both floors of both wings. And the most exciting part, of course, was central office. It was fun. It was nice to see.
Well, you feel like, you know, rows and rows and rows of studs.
Yeah, there wasn't much there. But it was really, it was great to see how everything interconnects and to see what possibilities we'll have in this building in the future because it is, you know, if everything's in one building, we will be able to hopefully be able to have some buddying up with kids and we'll be able to share some resources. We also took a trip to Connecticut last week to see furniture. And that was interesting. We saw some student furniture. We saw some office furniture. We saw some cafeteria tables. So that was, that was interesting. But we're going to be doing another visit to a showroom in Boston and we're gonna bring some teachers with us. And after we do that, we're hoping to bring back some furniture so that kids can try it out. They've told us we can, you know, they're gonna bring some furniture, some cafeteria tables so that kids can, you know, get a feel for it and test it out. And some chairs and desks for teachers too so we can see how everybody, you know, kind of likes it. So that, the furniture part's moving forward. We also are looking at what's going to be the room assignments. So today, we were talking on a leadership team about, we had some of the plans. And elementary teachers will have most likely, obviously, a room because they have a set classroom, whereas the junior, senior high school teachers are going to have to share rooms because MSBA does not allow you to build one per teacher. It's, there's a certain, it's based on our population size. So there will be room sharing, but it will be enough for everyone to have a room during a period. We also have a, we have teacher lounges where there will be some workstations. So if you're displaced during a period, into your free period, there'll be a place for you to go and work. You can dock your laptop and there'll be a little locker there next to that workstation where people can keep some things. So I think there's a lot of, a lot of work to be done on those room assignments because it's gonna make a difference now that we have sixth grade coming over too. So the junior, senior high school, which will now be the middle school, will have to coordinate with the elementary school to see just how that's going to work, who's going to be coming over to the junior, to the middle school and, you know, in the right subject areas with the right certification. But also how that's going to affect specialists and the schedules and all of that. So there's a lot of discussion going on right now.
So Dr. Lally, when do you hope to have a transition calendar that we can take a look at? Just to get a, not to hold you to it, just get a rough sense of some of these topics you've discussed.
Well, hopefully, next month, we'll have some preliminary. But right now, we're just, because there's a lot of things that are still in the works. So we haven't even been able to, until the bids go out for a mover, we don't know when that's going to happen because that goes through the construction company, not through us. There are a number of things that go through the construction company and we don't have control over it, but those things are done, you know, as they should be.
I'm thinking more about these room assignments and all that.
Well, that's, yeah, that's.
Yes, Secretary Alterio.
Do you currently have a list of, you know, the tasks that need to take place during this transition plan? So even if you don't know what the timeline is and when it's actually gonna happen, but, you know, all the components of what?
Well, it's not all components because we were not sure what we're gonna... Well, it's not all components because we were not sure what we're going to run into as we start doing the rooms and the.
The ones that you do know, like, you know.
It's right now, they've been working on the schedule for the middle school. They started it last year.
It might be just a style with listing all the tasks that, you know, you can, you know, just continue to add to the tasks as you think of them. And then, you know, the timing of what those need to happen. So what needs to be included in the transition plan. Like, you know, recognizing the timeline is contingent upon other factors.
Right. Yeah, and that's what we're doing. So that's what we started at Leadership Today. So it's, um, you know, more of figuring out faculty room assignments and how that shared faculty, how that sixth grade will transition. So that's a big piece of it, a big piece of what we'll be doing. Because other than that, it's, um, you know, that's the biggest part that we have to look at. The other pieces, you know, furniture and things like that are just, um, you know, kind of, uh, um, you know, you decide, you bring the stuff in and people are going to look at it. But it's not, um, this, the, the people part is difficult.
Now, you mentioned the furniture trip to Connecticut and said you're going to be bringing teachers to the Boston, um, showroom. Did any other faculty go to the Connecticut visit and what were your thoughts of?
Yes. Well, it was the, um, the principals and, um, Mike came, um, Jorge came. Um, and so they were, because they had been elementary teachers and, and junior, senior high school teachers, we figured they would get the first look at this. And it was during the summer when teachers aren't around. And we would get kind of a general idea of what, you know, what kind of things it was.
We would get some ideas, like?
We did, yes.
Impressed with what was there?
Yes. And I think that, um, now we want to see what's in this Boston showroom. And then from all of those, there are catalogs too, because, um, that was really only a couple of companies that we looked at. So there are a lot more out there and we can, um, see, we know the kinds of chairs that now are out there and we can take a look at the Boston showroom. And hopefully from that we can choose, um, you know, and from some of the visits we've done to other schools too with, um, with some of the teachers. We will look at some of the furniture and bring samples in and see, you know, then everybody gets a chance to look.
Do you have a date for the visit in Boston?
Not yet.
So how?
Because we have to see what, who can, you know, we want to, I asked the principals to get me volunteers.
That's, that was my next question. So is, is that all part of how you're making that decision?
Right.
Yeah. I think the faculty, I'm sure they have lots of ideas and opinions about.
I'm going to ask the members of the primary school building committee just to add anything at this moment about the building.
On the building update?
If you would.
Um, well, go ahead, Barbara. Yeah.
Well, I can tell you that on the tour, per usual, as the apparently official documentarian, I took a lot of pictures. Um, they're posted in the usual places. I sent, also sent the links to the pictures to, um, Mallory Stevens, who does the elementary newsletter, to Mary Beth, who does the junior, senior high school newsletter for inclusion in the next newsletter or as space permits, um, for a broader audience. And they're also posted, um, on various social media pages. And I sent the link to the superintendent, um, as well. So just, so that people could see, um, what I thought was kind of incredible, I mean, you could see, because the walls have just started, the inter, internal walls are just starting to go up there. A couple of model classrooms, so you can see, you know, the outlets and all of the, um, internet ports and like that. But where there weren't walls, I mean, you could see what really goes into the building, the, uh, you know, all of the ductwork and all of the cabling, all the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, all that stuff is going in now and it's, it's really amazing.
Vice Chair Tulsa, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, just, uh, I think one of the things that really impressed me as we went through the building was the way they've designed it to allow for natural light. There's natural light coming in either, even at the top in places that don't have windows. So, you know, I, that was nice. The fields are already, the softball and baseball field are already seated and look great. So, you know, they're making good progress. You know, the committee is working right now. We're doing well with our budget, but, you know, making some engineering decisions on things that we want to put back in that we might have taken out. That's who we are right now.
Like what are some of those?
Uh, well, we talked about, um, the driveways, what, we had changed it to bituminous and from the sidewalk from concrete. But now, you know, we're going to go back to the concrete, which certainly has a greater lifespan. So we did decide on that. And, um, storage sheds, which we know we need.
Right, both for director facilities, for all their stuff, and for the sporting.
Athletics.
So that's why they'll be in two different locations as well.
And we're having discussions about the flooring and the main foyer, so we, we didn't make a decision.
I was going to take this up in new business, but it would be nice if the members of the committee, maybe we could talk about it a little more, but maybe, well, let's do it now. I mean, I found these sidewalks on South Franklin Street to be in deplorable condition. And they're not really up to speed. And we're building this beautiful school where people are going to be walking on those sidewalks. And I'm just wondering whether or not there should be some coordination with the town so that they can modernize the sidewalks, you know? I mean, they've got these, uh, sidewalks really that I don't think have changed since Tom Cummings filled in the dirt, you know? They slope off and, and they're in bad need of repair. And I'm just wondering whether or not they should upgrade that and fix it up and, you know, make it look well so that it's a nice, natural, um, walking space and bicycling avenue for the, for the school.
Yes.
You know, because I think it's a safety issue and I, and I'm concerned about it. I don't know how the, how the members of the committee feel about it.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about. I think, you know, that's a good conversation to have with the town about if that's part of their overall plan. I don't know.
That's not part of the, the building project.
No, it's not.
No, it's not, but it would be nice to have a dialogue there at that level. We'll have one here too. I mean, don't get me wrong, but I think that the more squeaky wheel gets the.
Right, but we have public works.
We're not able to provide bus service to all our students and we should support those who walk to school.
Yeah, I agree with you, Member Flanagan. Well, all right. I didn't mean to interrupt, uh, Dr. Lally.
Yeah, yeah.
But, um, why don't we please continue, Dr. Lally? Well, personnel, why don't you just roughly mention the new hires?
Can I ask one question about this construction project?
Yes, please.
Um, when you were discussing the, the tour of the building, I was thinking that I would very much like to have a tour of the building. And then my next thought was, I think the community too. Is there any possibility that we could arrange tours?
Well, I had mentioned, oh, you, that was last school committee meeting. I mentioned that, that anybody here, you know, should show up for that one. That would have been good. But I'm sure they could do it again. I don't know if they could bring the community through there because it's still too rough and I think it's too dangerous.
I will say this, Member Flanagan, I think if you arrange a time, they will give you a tour.
But the school committee tour.
I think the school committee tour.
Yeah, no, we could do that.
School committee tour would be appropriate, but I think, I think they don't want the community trips.
Well, why don't we do that? Why don't we, why don't we pick a, let's say, some Thursday, that's an off Thursday? Um, I'll, I'll work that out with them if that's all right with you.
It has to be early, it has to be late.
Yeah, we'll try to do it, uh, we'll try to do it soon.
But if you do it soon, at least it'll be light at seven and done.
Right. No, no, I think that's right. I think we can do that.
Yeah. And I actually, I understand the concerns about bringing the community in, but I don't want to let that drop so easily. I think it would be a great thing if we could allow some of the community members to, to tour the building now to maintain their, their interest in it.
Well, I think it's a, let me say this to you, it's, that's going to be up to the discretion of the contract as they have won.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And when you say community members, are you talking to public at large or were you, you're talking about?
Yeah, offer, offer a tour on a Saturday morning and say there'll be.
I think it's too rough based on walking through danger.
Maybe so.
It's probably, doesn't mean eighty-eight guideline, you know what this means.
You don't know if they have liability or insurance.
Right, and SMMA, they, they have their own safety guide and he was very, I mean, he was concerned with the committee members.
All right. All right, just, just, wait a minute, just to, I think we've got the drift of it.
But I do think we do bring the public into it through all the, you know, your photos and stuff like that. So you're trying to keep the public, um, apprised of what's happening to all your workers.
That's a point well, well made. All right, please continue, Dr. Lally.
Okay, for new hires so far, um, we have additions, but not by the time the agenda was out. So we have, um, as you met Jorge Gonzalez Quiano, um, last time, he's our new tech or, uh, technology director. He didn't make it onto the list last time, so we have him on here again. Jessica Legrand is our, uh, special education administrative assistant taking over for Bonnie Fitzpatrick. And she's already started and she's, um, uh, Bonnie is mentoring her. Caitlin Masha is a school psychologist at the Holbrook Junior Senior High School. Um, and we've been needing one for a while. We've had, um, outside agency having to take over because we couldn't find one before. And, um, we're very pleased with, um, the people we've found so far.
Great, thank you. Um, we had some people departing too, didn't we? Did you?
Yeah, they didn't make it onto this, so they'll be at the next.
All right, you'll mention them at the next meeting? All righty. Now we'll turn, is there any more to be said in the superintendent's report?
No, I think that's, thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Lally. So now we'll turn to our school business administrator, uh, Ms. Lugo. Please, uh, please elucidate us with your, uh.
Well, things are running smoothly. Um, during the summer is the time that we close out the books from the previous fiscal year and have started the, working off of the new budget for this school year. So we're working under two budgets, we're wrapping up FY16. Uh, we have not yet made the, the expense to the circuit breaker account. Um, we're, I'm just waiting for reconciliation with the town accountant with Beth. Once we reconcile her ledger with ours, because again, we're on two different accounting systems, um, then I'll make that transaction. I can do it now, except that if we have a few general adjustments to make or something, then we'll have to do another entry. So we're just going to wait and do one final entry for the expenses.
Have there been any minor discrepancies that perhaps were fixed over the course?
Minor, yeah.
What, what's an example of those?
Uh, one payroll was, um, charged to our budget when it really should have been charged to FY15's encumbrances, for instance. So that was brought to the attention. Um, mostly it's in the deposits, when we put down an account number for the deposits. Sometimes it didn't go into that account, it would go into a different account. So we've had to reconcile the revolving accounts and the grants. So minor changes.
Are there any red flags here from what you?
Oh, no, no.
Well, let me ask you about the progress on the, uh, this accounting of the, uh, of the proposed, uh, funds for the student activities. What's being done there?
Well, this summer I am working with, uh, the three secretaries at the schools who maintain the books for those. We're reconciling them to the town accounts and, um, putting through, putting a, a procedures manual together, policy and procedures manual together so that everyone's doing everything the correct way.
Do you think perhaps at the September meeting, one of our meetings, you could make a presentation on that? I'm sure it will be done by then. So are there any questions to, uh, business manager? Thank you for these reports. Uh, they're very thorough and we appreciate them. Um, the next item, uh, on our discussion were the start times for the elementary and secondary levels. This was replaced on here because there were some questions about whether or not the start times were adequate. Um, and, uh, the, uh, I'm trying to remember, what are the current start times?
Um, the junior, senior high school is seven thirty and the, um, the, uh, the south is at seven thirty. And the JFK is at eight thirty.
Okay. Will that change with the new building?
Well, that, um, it, they, the architects and the, the traffic study recommend that we have an hour between the starts of both, both schools. And, um, that was the, um, you know, if you stayed with the same times, it would be seven thirty and eight thirty again. But, um, I know there's been some question about whether, um, we should look at the, um, the research on whether, um, high schoolers should go to school, um, at a later time. And, you know, there's been talk about it. Uh, not a lot of people in our area have changed, but that's something I think that's up for discussion and, you know.
What's your feeling about it or your, your thinking about it, I should say, as opposed to feeling about it?
Um, it's a, it's a difficult subject to, I mean, I think that the research says that kids are, are high school kids, their circadian clock changes. And that, that I think is true and that they go to bed, um, later and they like to get up later. Um, but there are a lot of, uh, consequences to changing the times. So, um, you know, some of them are good. Obviously, that would mean that they would be more focused and more awake during classes. Maybe they would learn better. Um, and I had read an article too that would talked about motor vehicle accidents, um, happening, happening more often with drowsy teenagers. But then there's the other side, which is the practical pieces as far as, um, our students being, um, a lot of our students take, participate in many after-school activities, co-curricula and athletic activities. And some of them work because they need to. And also there are students who go home and take care of children because their parents are working. So I think it, it could put a hardship on, first of all, parents because they, they'd lose their babysitters and they'd also lose a person who might be transporting children home after school. But it would also, uh, but we would have a difficult time, especially in the fall, when, um, when it gets dark quickly and other schools are not, you know, they, they'd have to change their schedule for us. And are they going to change their schedule for us? Everybody doesn't have lights, so they can't play under the lights. And even if they did, you run the risk of mosquito-borne illnesses that are pretty serious. And, uh, so you have all of these factors to take into account. Um, plus students, you know, by the time they get home and, and do homework, if you started the day later, they had these activities. And then by the time they go home to do homework, it's pushing the limit there.
I wonder what Ben Franklin would have thought of?
Well, yes. But, you know, it, I think even in our day, we would have liked more sleep. I'm not sure that, you know, I, I think you have to wait.
I don't think I ever thought of it when I was in high school.
No, we just did what we had to do.
I know you're right about that.
Right. So.
Member Davis, you have a comment?
Um, I know some schools have changed start times offhand. I can't name specifics. I know it was on the school committee listserv and certainly they've resolved, um, those related issues. But, um, I wonder if, um, and I don't want to jump ahead, but it was one of the things, um, on the subcommittee on the, uh, school committee survey about tweaking that for, uh, and getting it out around back to school nights is that could be a question on there. Or we could have a, a public meeting to kind of see what parents think. I mean, they're the ones that are directly affected and gauge the community because I think that it's such an important issue that we shouldn't be making it in a vacuum in spite of all the knowledge and all the research that various people have read, but rather to actually talk to the stakeholders.
Well, somebody who's now getting up at four fifty in the morning, the level at eight thirty seems terribly late in the morning.
It could be something in between. It could be something in between.
I mean, we're not saying suggesting the school should start at ten o'clock for the middle high school.
But what about, what about the younger students, the elementary students? Is there any studies about their, their start time?
Really, they concentrate on the teenagers because they change.
Yes, that's, that's what a lot of communities have done.
Yeah.
So, I think.
Well, it's interesting, I don't, you know, why don't we do this? I think that, Dr. Lally, why don't you give us a little suggestion, prototype? And then if it seems advisable to add, you know, the public comment into it, we'll certainly factor that in. But I think we should, in the first instance, why don't you get us a report sometime in September? Let's say, it's not gonna happen this year, I don't think so. Why don't we talk about it and, and bring it up again? All right?
Okay, I have one article with me that you might want, just because I brought them.
Yes, absolutely.
So, if you wanna take this one and there's plenty, you know, there's, there's plenty more out there. But this one I just happened to come across today and there was, yeah, and there were some articles that said start at ten, but then we'd have a lot of trouble.
No, but that's, that's what communities have done is they, but they've, they've just blocked it.
And I know that in Down the Cape, there's a group of them because they all play each other in sports. And that really is a deciding factor, you know?
They decided not to or they decided to?
They, they did it together.
They did it together.
Because if you don't do it with the people in your league, you're depriving kids of something that would help, would boost their resume for college. Also, if you, you're the only one that goes late, what's gonna happen is your kids are gonna lose academic time because they'll have to be dismissed every single game that's an away game. So, kids are gonna learn time, lose time on learning and I think academically that is just not a good thing.
Rather large print.
It is, isn't it? It printed out that way, I said, maybe it's because I was scoffing it from a side.
Interesting, well, all right, to be continued.
Could you, when you do that, could you also just get feedback from staff and the administrators to them?
We talked about it today and I didn't see a great enthusiasm for her, you know? For the same reasons that we talked about.
Interesting.
But I do agree that, you know, to move Barbara, that, you know, we need to, you know, see how the parents stand, yeah, as well as the students.
Well, let's get a report first, a preliminary report. Your suggestions are important and then we can vet it publicly, I think that makes sense. Okay, so now we're turning to the subcommittee member reports. And would anyone like to start off on a certain particular subcommittee report? Yes.
Just to continue the discussion that I started a moment ago. That we had said that, you know, doing the survey would be an annual kind of thing. And I'm thinking that if the communications subcommittee could get its act together and, you know, tweak it and, you know, potentially add a start time question that obviously it's non-binary, but at least it'll be a start to gauge opinion and maybe, you know, get, you know, delete some of the other questions for the committee to look at at our next meeting and so that we can make people aware.
Well, here's the, here's the issue I have on some of those things. To be meaningful, I think we owe the public a duty to inform them, you know, as much as possible. So, I mean, my thinking is, I don't have a problem adding it at some point, I don't know that it needs to be on the next one.
Okay, well, that's fine, but we must tweak it anyway.
Because, you know, it, let's put it this way, an ill-informed opinion doesn't necessarily give us enough significant data. But if we know the public's got all the data, what do you think? Then I think that's more meaningful, that's my sense of it.
Okay, well, we'll skip that, but if we can produce a draft for the next school committee meeting.
Feel free to, your committees, feel free to do whatever you want.
Which is, I think, the, the ninth or, or something, because the back-to-school nights begin the following week so that it would be a way to get the information out that they should do this, you know, starting whatever date we decide.
Our next meeting is when?
It's, it's that week, 'cause we have two next month.
We do?
Yeah. I'll tell you in a second, it is the eighth.
The eighth, right, that's what I thought.
We have the eighth and the twenty-ninth.
Okay.
If we can get something together for the eighth, back to school at the elementary, uh, the following Wednesday and Thursday, just so that people now getting a heads up.
Well, my sense, if you're going to try to do it on the eighth for a vote, you might wanna get it earlier to the committee members in case they have comments. The, I think that if there are no other subcommittee member reports right now, I don't know that there necessarily are, then we'll turn to individual school committee member reports. Is there any member who would like to make an individual member report?
I have one thing to say.
Yes.
And that is that I attended the Theater Camp Musical a couple weeks ago and, per usual, it was incredible production of Lion King Junior, you know, a three-week camp. And at the end of the three weeks, they put on a basically full-length musical.
Nice.
With students ranging in age from kindergarten through eighth grade with approximately forty junior, senior high school or high school students volunteering as counselors plus some recent alumni assisting as well and just a total all-around effort by all parties.
Interesting, thank you so much. All right, we'll now turn to some action items, we have four action items listed. The first is a three hundred dollar donation from Elizabeth Eaton toward the Peace Pole of recent memory in memory of Mr. Ted Eaton. Would anyone like to speak on this?
I, I could just say that Betsy wanted to donate to the Peace Pole Project and so she wanted to remember her father this way. And so she sent that over, knowing that they were talking about raising funds. And because it's a school group, she thought this would be the place to send it and so that'd be there for your.
So, I'm assuming that's a school fund, where they say they're doing a fundraiser, that's kind of a school fund, is it? How does that work?
It's a school club, so, yeah.
It's gotta be under their fund, right?
Exactly, yes.
So, okay, would anyone like to make a motion about the donation?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, it passes unanimously. We'll next turn to, again, I don't like the word dispose. It says request to dispose of approximately two hundred outdated reference books and VHS tapes. I suppose who can speak to this?
That's, that was the elementary.
I guess this is another one.
Chris Golden now has looked at the junior, senior high school and has come up with these and she's vacationist.
Well, I would, I mean, it would be nice to have a list of what the reference books are and what the VHS tapes are, at least, so we know we're not throwing out Hamlet or something.
No, I don't think so, 'cause we're still teaching that, so we should still have that. I think they're ones, ones that are, yeah, things that people have not used.
Well, my only caveat is I would like to amend this to say not only dispose of or to donate to appropriate nonprofit.
That'd be great.
And that's how we handled it.
Right, does that make sense?
Yes.
Would someone like to make that amendment to the?
One.
All right.
Second.
We'll treat that as a motion that's been made and amended. So, we'll now vote on the motion as amended. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay. And is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor, it passes unanimously. We'll now turn to a two-minute meetings, June the thirtieth, two thousand sixteen. Are there any comments on these minutes? If there are none, I'll accept a motion if someone will make it, accept it. Any discussion, all those in favor?
I have to abstain as a.
Okay, I guess you can't buy them. All right, that's true. Would someone make a motion on July twenty-first? July twenty-first?
So moved.
Any second, all those in favor?
I'll abstain.
Okay, that passes. All right, old business, I have one thing under old business. We had asked Julie to look into a room for us and how have you made up?
So, the problem that we're having is the weekends. I guess on the weekends, they have the, right, somebody who's at the I C regulations, has someone there and has to make their interim meetings.
Right.
So, they said definitely they couldn't use the presidential area, which is upstairs. They might be able to get us downstairs, but we're sputtering, you know, a couple days. I don't know if you, to bring it back and see the bottom of the facility, it's still a nice facility.
Sure.
But it's not the same.
That's all right, yeah.
So, then I came forward, made the deal to.
That'll be fine, thank you so much for getting back to us on that. Now, under new business, I have circulated a bylaw of the town, which I wasn't aware of. I'm assuming that the school committee members earlier hadn't been aware of this either 'cause I don't recall this becoming up. But there's a, there's apparently a committee that consists of various financial departments and it calls for a designee of the school committee. I don't wanna take it up today, I received a call from the town administrator, Gordon, who said he would appear, he would be at this meeting along with some of these other folks. And his idea was to have, you know, someone from staff attend it. But my thinking is it probably should be somebody from the school committee. I think this is a great opportunity for us to, you know, integrate our set of values into the budget. And I think that we, we have internal staff to help us prepare for a meeting like that. But I think it would be helpful if we had someone from the committee, so I just want you to think about it. We'll take it up at our next meeting in September for a vote.
The purpose of it is they're compiling financial information.
Correct.
Right, so I, I mean, my personal feeling is I think you do need the finance person there.
I think, I think you do, I think you do, but I also think it's important to have someone that's knowledgeable on the school committee.
Yeah, I mean.
Finances.
So, in reading, yeah, in reading this language, shall compile financial data and, you know, we're not, you know, actually be able to do that. We do think it makes a lot of sense to have Trish there, but I also value your opinion about having somebody, you know, from the school committee. So, I don't know if there's, is there?
Why don't we think about it and, why don't we think about it and then take it up at the vote? I'm not, I'm flexible on that. All right, I'm flexible on that.
Just another, so, do we know, has this committee been formed and have they met in the past?
The committee was formed apparently in two thousand four, but as far as I know, or two thousand seven, as far as I know, and Barbara would know better, I mean, and you would know, 'cause you've both been on the committee for a while. I don't believe you ever appointed anybody to it, so that would, says it all.
I don't think it's ever come up, that's why I wonder.
Yeah, I, I think it would have saved us, I can tell you this, it would have saved us a lot of grief over the years had we known that the committee was around, you know?
Tim told me that they hadn't met and he just found it in the bylaw.
Right, they just realized.
They just realized, right.
That's what I wondered.
That's my understanding.
To those, Tim, for ensuring these things happen.
Mr. Chairman, do you know when they're gonna start meeting?
I think, well, he's already sort of informally meeting with the town people and of course, we're meeting with our business managers, so, you know. I wanted to bring it up, why don't you think about it? It may make sense to do it that way. They would like to meet around probably in the mor- either in the morning or late afternoon, so why don't you think about it too? And we'll take this up at our next meeting for a vote, all right?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
One more item under new business for the next meeting?
Yes, please, go right ahead.
It's that time of year where we need to vote for a delegate to the school committee conference.
Great, we'll take that up at the next meeting. All right, are there, is there any other new business?
There may be one thing, I don't know if it'll be next, maybe the second meeting in September, but Chomps needs, needs another vote. We voted to investigate terminating and now they will need a vote to terminate.
All right, so put that on the agenda. And can you put those other two items on the agenda, Bridgette, that we just mentioned? Great, thank you. Any other items? Okay, we can go to the order here, I'll entertain a motion, someone would like to make a motion. Senator Jaren, second, all those in favor? This meeting is closed.